Welcome, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, City Hall, August 15th, 2023, 4:30 p.m. Thanks, everybody, for coming. And I'm going to call on Dana Beasley, Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown, to do our invocation and the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to invite Landon Harding from the Wesley Foundation up to give our invocation. I've invited Landon to come and give our invocation today because it is back-to-school season here in Bowling Green, and we know our city transforms during that time. County's back in school, city school started today, and then our Western students are moving in this week. And so I've asked Landon here, he is the Campus Minister of the WKU Wesley Foundation, to give the invocation to bless our students, our families, and our whole community as we get back to school and begin this meeting. So, thank you so much. If all of you will stand.
Thank you.
If you feel comfortable, would you join me in prayer tonight? Heavenly Father, we come before you today, and we thank you for another school year, the excitement and joy that the students bring to this community and in our lives. We thank you for each student and for each teacher and professor. We thank you for the school administration. We thank you for the janitorial staff and everyone who helps with maintenance. We thank you for everybody, every person that makes a difference in the lives of our students. God, as we return to classes, would you be with our students? Would you make them feel loved and welcome? Would you help them learn and grow, not just in their education, but mature as people? Would you be with our teachers and professors? Would you give them energy and patience and the support they need? Would you be with our administration and our community leaders who make decisions that affect the lives of our students? Would you guide them with wisdom? And would you lead them with compassion? God, would you help this community be a place that is known for loving its students of all ages, to those first starting and learning centers, all the way up through our elementary school and our high school and even our college? God, I ask that this body continue to make decisions that would love and nurture our students and our school systems. We pray all of this in your holy name. Amen.
So much, Landon. Everyone will turn with me, and we'll say the pledge together. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the equal public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ashley, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor Protem Peirgen.
Here.
And Mayor Alcott, who is absent.
As you can see, the mayor is absent. He's a little under the weather, and so I'm going to fill in. So, everybody on the cameras and on the television and in this room, just bear with me, will be fine. I'm sure my fellow commissioners here will help us get through this meeting, unusual meeting. I, too, want to say, welcome back to school for the city school, started today, and the county school started last week. But in a different light on that is, please, just everybody be aware, when you're driving our streets and when you're out and about, and little ones with backpacks that aren't used to disembarking off of buses and all those things, just let's just put safety first and be aware, and bless all those little kids back to school. Katie, any awards and recognitions that you... Are you performing the public hearing? We're going to have a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain comments from residents regarding the proposed 2023 property tax rates.
So, I'm doing double duty tonight, so forgive me for having on the Chief Financial Officer hat here at the moment. So, this is our annual public hearing. So, we recently received the property assessments from the Property Valuation Administrator for property values as of January 1st of 2023. We've completed the computations, and really, that was Treasury staff that completed the computations. They're here. I would like to thank Zane Martin and Shawn Weeks for helping with that process. So, again, we completed those computations, and I am presenting the recommendation for the 2023 tax rates. Again, we are required to have a public hearing simply because the proposed rate that we're going to be going with is between the compensating rate and a 4% growth rate. So, whenever we have a rate higher than the compensating rate, we have to have a public hearing. That's by state law. Notice of the public hearing was posted on the city's website in accordance with state statute. It was also published in the Daily News on August 8th, and we utilize our social media accounts to get information out, starting on August 4th, about this public hearing. So, to do a little bit of a recap, total assessed value on real estate in the city limits for 2023 is over $6.8 billion, with a B, dollars. So, we had a 6% growth rate, or $382 million, over 2022. Since the city surpassed a $6 billion assessed value, that was probably two or three, four years ago now, we do have to pay $100,000 to the Property Valuation Administrator's office to receive our assessments. That's a requirement by statute. So, looking at existing real estate assessments, they grew by 2.7%, or just over $172.2 million for 2023 compared to 2022. New property assessments in 2023 adds an additional 3.3%, or nearly $209.9 million. This complicated computation, trying to make it as simple as possible for you, put it up here on the board. But before setting a tax rate, each local government is required to go through this calculation process. We are to basically come up with what is our no-growth rate. So, what is the compensating rate? And in this case, it calculates out, you see it at the very bottom, with the letter "I" at 20 cents. And that is to bring in the same amount of revenue as we would have received for 2022. In 2022, we did have 20.5 cents, and that could have produced $13.1 million. So, that is what we are essentially calculating back to. Now, if we did go with a 4% rate increase, again, we are required to calculate this. That does not mean that the board is required to accept it. We just have to calculate the rate. So, a 4% growth rate is the maximum allowable increase by statute, which is not subject to recall. So, you can do a rate higher than 4%. It's a little more complicated, but most local governments simply look at the 4% growth rate. In this case, 4% would be 20.8 cents. It could produce $14.15 million in potential revenues. That's before any new homestead exemptions or other exonerations are applied during the calendar year. Generally, we only collect about 94% of the amount of revenue that these calculations propose, and so we would be somewhere around $13.3 million if we were to go with that 4% growth rate. However, we are proposing to maintain the tax rate as it currently stands. So, for 2023, the rate would remain unchanged from the prior year at 20.5 cents. That is for real estate. So, again, as an example, for any property that's assessed at $100 value, then that would be $205 in property tax for that $100,000. So, this year, I actually put together, this is a new slide, and it's a comparison of revenues. I always went through this previously, but I think maybe people got lost in the numbers. So, I just wanted to present this to show you exactly the comparison from our prior fiscal year 2023 to what we are looking at for our 2024 fiscal year. That is the 2023 calculation. So, FY23 actually collected just under $12.36 million, or again, as mentioned, about 93.9% of our collection rate. This is, again, in part because exonerations for 2022 are not known when the calculation is done, and we can't guarantee 100% collections in any given year. So, we did budget in 2023 at $12.25 million. We generally have to set our budget before we have any idea of where we're going to fall with the calculations on property tax. So, very appropriately, we were within 1% of a variance of what our budget is to what we collected. That's pretty positive. In FY2024, the current rate, again staying at 20.5 cents, could produce $13.9 million in potential revenue. However, we know that we won't get that much. So, I use the same 93.9% collection rate as FY23. So, that brings us to about $13.1 million of revenue. We budgeted for FY24 $12.995 million, again projecting close to a 1% variance. And I know this is important when it comes to homestead exemptions. So, residents that are 65 years or older can apply for a homestead exemption. This year's exemption is $46,350. That rate is set by the Office of Property Valuation Administration. It is not anything we control, but they set that rate for a two-year time period. So, that $46,350 starts for 2023 will remain in place for 2024. And in comparison, the prior two years was $40,500. So, that is a 14.4% inflationary increase on that amount from one year, from those past two years, to the next two years. Here's a 10-year history of our real estate property growth and tax rates, which we've set each year. The tax rate remained unchanged from 2008 through 2017 at the 20.6 cents, until it was slightly lowered in 2018, when we did exceed 4% growth rate in existing real estate. And then, again, this 20.5 cents has remained unchanged for the past five years. Again, as my fiduciary duty to you, I need to point out that at some point in the future, we may need to consider changing this rate. And I say that in part because our rating agencies, like Moody's or Standards &amp; Poor's, when we're looking to issue debt, they give us a rating. We are in a very good position today, but they prefer local governments do take the 4% growth rate each year because it is the most stable revenue source that we have. So, again, not proposing any change this year, but that could be something that needs to be looked at into the future. And going back 33 years, the real property tax rate has only been increased nine times, and it was last increased in 2003 to 26.9 cents. Since 2003, the rate has been lowered five times. And again, that is when our real estate growth on existing real estate was more than 4%. We were not required to reduce it, but we did take that option. It's just more simple for everyone involved. This is a comparison of where the City of Bowling Green rates for real estate and personal property tax compare. And I don't have 23 rates for these other entities, but this is the average calendar year 2022 rates for cities, counties, and school districts within the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And you can see that our proposed 23 tax rate for real estate and personal property falls well below the average for those cities, counties, and school districts. The personal property tax rate has remained unchanged since 1980, when it was lowered from 30 cents. The city's FY24 annual operating budget total taxes represent 17% of all revenues, at approximately $26.5 million, and 22% or nearly $21.6 million of just general fund revenues. And real estate very specifically makes up 60% of that general fund revenue amount. Again, comparing 2023 to 2022, because I do not know yet what the Independent School District, Warren County, and Warren County Schools are going to do this coming year. But looking at what our 23 proposed rate, again remaining unchanged from 2022, compares to what the 2022 rates were for our local, other local government agencies within Warren County and the state. I believe the county may have had first reading of an ordinance, possibly proposing a reduced personal property tax rate, but I don't have that information to share at the moment. Now, some general property tax information, which is very important, hopefully people are listening to this. As I wrap up the public hearing, I want to provide some additional general information. So, persons that own property in the City of Bowling Green will pay taxes to both the city and Warren County. You will get two property tax invoices. You will also receive, on the city's invoice, if your property is located within the Bowling Green Independent School District, then that property tax amount will also be on the city's invoice. We do not set the rate for the Bowling Green Independent School District. We simply collect on their behalf. So, I want to make that perfectly clear. We have no control over the rate they set. We just simply collect it. That's a benefit to them for us to do that. But that will be on, obviously, for those properties where you live within the school district. City taxes are always due December 31st, so in this case, December 31st of 2023. This year, December 31st falls on a Sunday. That means there's a built-in period of time that property taxes will need to be paid no later than 7:30 a.m. on January 2nd, if that makes sense. So, there's a couple of days in there. We will be closed on Monday, January 1st, in observance of the holiday. So, again, we have many methods to make payments. There is a Dropbox just right outside of City Hall Annex. You can make payment online. You can certainly send in. I would not rely very heavily, though, on the U.S. mail. We just found out today, we mailed out a check on January 28th, I'm sorry, July 28th, received today. So, two weeks minimum. So, if you are going to mail it, we will accept a postmarked date of December 30th, December 31st, if you're able to do that. So, if it does get arrived later, as long as it's postmarked by the appropriate date, we will accept that. So, just be aware, that is important, to get those payments in on time. There is a 10% penalty that applies first thing on the morning of January 2nd. So, we want to be perfectly upfront about that. Taxes, the tax invoices will be similar in format as in past years. It's eight and a half by 11 tear sheet, basically. Again, a remittance slip. It's very easy to mail those in, but don't rely too heavily on the mail. We estimate mailing out over 23,000 invoices, and then probably getting back somewhere around 1,000 of those because of incorrect addresses. So, we encourage residents, if you have changed addresses since January 1st of this calendar year, to please contact us, make sure we do have the right address on file, and to also update that information with the Property Valuation Office. Let's see. We will, obviously, try to get as much of that information updated as possible and mail those invoices to the appropriate address as that happens. We expect to hopefully mail out those invoices in the early part of October. So, even if your tax invoice is not received, you are still required to pay the bill. If you haven't received it by the 1st of November, again, relying heavily on the U.S. Post Office to get things in on time, but if you don't receive it, please contact the Office of Treasury for the city so that we can make sure to get you the information that you need so you can make payment on time. It's also important to note that persons with mortgage escrow accounts set up to pay their taxes will still need to make sure that the city tax is paid. We cannot guarantee that the mortgage company will make that payment on time, so they are responsible for following up. And then, it's also just important to know that the property owner is still responsible to make sure that payment is made on time. And we may or may not have up-to-date mortgage information. So, we will do our best to get these invoices out to the mortgage companies, but we just can't guarantee that we will reach all of them or even have them all at the right location. So, again, property owners, please follow up and make sure that that payment has been made on your behalf. If, again, as I mentioned, if an invoice is not received on time, please contact our office. And this next slide gives you the contact information. I would also like to thank the city's information technology and Treasury staff for all of their efforts with processing the 23,000-plus invoices that we are putting out and assisting our property owners with questions and payments, that sort of thing. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to make comments, they are welcome to come up to the podium at this time. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay. We will take, we will continue to take comments and questions until next week, August 22nd, so those can be mailed in, emailed, faxed, however, whatever is convenient. We do have an ordinance on tonight's agenda for first reading to set the property tax rate, and so when we get to that on the agenda, we can discuss that further. Hopefully, if all goes well this evening, we would have second reading September 5th. This timeline will allow staff the opportunity to get these invoices ready and out, hopefully, like I said, the 1st of October. Do you have any questions?
Katie, always, you always break it down. You know, I appreciate every way you break it down to make sure that we fully understand what's going on. The only question that I would actually have is that we're collecting at a 93.9% rate. And I know you said many times since I've been here that we possibly need to look at, you know, raising it at some point. I'm glad that we're not doing that today, and I hope that we don't do it in the future. But is there a way to possibly try to collect the 6.1%? And I know some of it has to do with the age, with the homestead exemptions, but is there a way to collect a little bit higher so we don't have to raise it in the future?
You know, I've looked at this for the past 15 years, and it just averages out to about 94% collection rate. We do make every effort, and Hillary and Kristi within the legal office are also making every effort to send out notices for delinquent property tax collection. You just did that a couple, three, four weeks ago. We did get a great response from that, but we just can't guarantee that we're ever going to get 100% collection. Again, those homestead exemptions, you know, we don't always know when those are going to be applied, and that does adjust our calculations as we move forward. But we will make every attempt to collect on those delinquent properties taxes as much as we can. And we go back several years, so government never forgets, sorry to say. And so, we will make every effort to continue to collect on those.
Katie, will this PowerPoint be on the website?
I can certainly make sure it's on the website.
I think it would be a good idea for anybody out there that wants to look at it a little closer, they could...
Sure. We can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. No one from the audience? Okay. All right. So, with no further discussion, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie, and everybody involved. Now, you're going to take that hat off and put another one on. As everybody could see, Jeff is out today, our city manager, and Katie is acting city manager, as the assistant city manager. We want to wish him well as he's welcoming his children into college. So, that's always fun. So, any comments, Katie?
I do have some additional comments, so if you have additional items, I will do everything I can to keep you upped and...
And move you efficiently through the agenda. I also want to remind everyone here in the audience, if you would like to make public comments at the end of the meeting, we ask you to please sign up. There's a clipboard, forgive me, in the back corner of the room so that you can do that, and then we would call on the individuals at the end of the meeting.
I will ask for a motion in a second for the approval of the meetings from, approval of the minutes of the meeting from August 1st, 2023.
So moved, second.
Motion by Hill. Do you all mind if I use your last names for efficiency? Second by Bailey. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll do a roll call. I'm sorry.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Peirgen.
Yes. All right. Going to move to the items for consideration, Municipal Order Number 2023-165.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Tim Kickert to the position of crew supervisor two in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
We have some organizational changes that are being proposed in the Parks Department, so this is the first, and even the next item on the agenda are kind of part of that. So, our Human Resources and Risk Management Director, Aaron Halsey, is going to come forward to discuss that a little bit and make the presentations for recommendation.
And for the record, that was a motion by Bailey and a second by Hill. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So, I am going to explain these two items together. They make sense when they go together. For a long time, we have had a Parks Facilities Coordinator as part of our Athletics Department, and the responsibility of that individual and that position has been to make sure that all of our athletic fields have been maintained and ready to go for athletic events. So, think about our baseball fields being mowed, striped, dirt getting ready, getting volleyball, sand courts ready. So, lots that is involved in those types of areas. But, and so the person that is in that position, about eight months out of the year, is not available to assist with programming. They're outside for the majority of their time, and they do come indoors typically for the basketball season, assisting with programming. We have such a growing and a robust athletics program. So, many people want to play, and we've noticed that if we could do a little bit of reorganizing of these positions, we could probably enhance our athletic programs. So, we are recommending that we take the person who is in the position of this Facilities Coordinator and actually move them out of the Athletics Division and move them into the Parks Maintenance Division, as this really is a function of Parks Maintenance. And so, the person in this position is Alex Alvy, and so we'll be moving to the position of Athletics Facility Coordinator in Grade 114 to Parks Facility Maintainer 2, which is a Grade 113. To be fair to him, he is maintaining the same pay rate, which is aligned within that pay grade, and he will be switching from reporting to Pete Samios, the Athletics Supervisor, to Tim Kickert. So, which brings us to the promotion of Tim Kickert. He is a Crew Supervisor 1. His main responsibility is overseeing all of the fields at Lover's Lane Complex and Preston Miller Complex. So, he has a couple of employees that help him with that. He's also the only certified playground person, safety certified, which is required by the state. So, he's the only one who does that for the city right now. So, he's taking on a lot of parks. Think of all the ballparks at Curriacus, at Lampkin, at Pettigo. There's some at Lampkin. They're kind of all over, and so a whole bunch of parks that were not previously under Tim Kickert are now going to be. And Alex Alvy is, he also brings some seasonal and some part-time employees with him. So, a lot more responsibilities, duties, and so we thought that a promotion from Crew Supervisor 1 in 116 to Crew Supervisor 2 in 117 was appropriate. I'm sorry, 117 to 118. So, that kind of explains both of those moves right now. Hopefully, to bring some more efficiency, we will then backfill the position on the Athletics Division with someone who will do programming 12 months out of the year. So, that's really going to enhance our programs there. A little confusing. Do you have any questions?
Questions or comments? That sounds like a good plan. Is Mr. Kickert or Mr. Alvy here this evening?
Not here tonight.
Okay. We still want, well, we haven't voted on the second one. Let's take a vote on the second one, and we'll congratulate and vote.
Yeah, we'll be on the first one first, 165. Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Peirgen.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-166.
Municipal Order approving the transfer of Alex Alvy to the position of Parks Facility Maintainer 2 in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bailey, second by Hill. Oh, I'm sorry.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes. Okay, so let's give a little hand to Tim Kickert and Alex Alvey. Congratulations to everybody, in case they're watching, or go back and watch. Municipal order number 2023-167.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Jessie James to the position of Operations Maintenance Technician 1 in the Public Works Department.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey.
This position, this position became vacant with a recent promotion of Joshua Minton to Signal Technician, so I'd like to ask Human Resources Manager Lori Gray to come forward and present this recommendation for appointment.
I'm here to recommend Jessie James to be appointed to the position of Operations Maintenance Technician 1, or what we call OMT 1 at times. Jessie worked for us a few years back, and we are eager to have him back on that team over in the Operations Department. He was employed here in 2021. He graduated from Allen County High School and served four years in the United States Air Force. He couldn't be with us tonight. But do you have any questions? Let me know.
Questions or comments from, roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-168.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Terry Roberts to the position of Service Technician in the Public Works Department.
So moved. Second.
By Hill, second by Beasley Brown. Katie?
This is a new position that was added with the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 budget, and so I would like Ms. Gray to please come back up and present this recommendation for appointment.
Again, I'm here to recommend Terry Roberts to be appointed to the position of Service Technician in our Fleet Division of the Public Works Department. Mr. Roberts is relocating here from Warsaw, Indiana, where he currently works for the Warsaw Street Department, the City of Warsaw Street Department. We do believe that he will be an asset to the team over at Fleet. He has also had a job history that included Boto, Body, I'm sorry, Body and Paint Manager for Airworks and a mechanic for John Deere. Just let me know if you have any questions. He couldn't be with us this evening.
Comments?
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-169.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Dimitro Konrad Tovic to the position of Financial Specialist in the Finance Department.
So moved. Second.
Motion by, I'm sorry, motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown.
I'm very much invested in this particular appointment, as it's for my department. This is also a new position, which was added with the FY24 budget. Thank you very much for approving that. And so this HR manager, Tiara Britt, is going to come forward and present this particular recommendation.
Afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to recommend Mr. Dimitro Konrad Tovic for the Financial Specialist Position. Dimitro is from the Ukraine, and he received his Business Administration Degree from Mychnikov National University, 4.0 GPA. He also received a Top Student Award for Economics and Law in 2018 and 2019. During that time, he was one of 15 students out of 500 to be selected for an Study Abroad Program with Murray State University, where they were sent to Italy, and he learned to speak Italian. He also speaks Ukrainian and Russian, and upon graduation, Dimitro has worked as a junior business analyst. So, we cannot wait to have him. He's very knowledgeable, he's analytical, and he's here tonight with his grandparents, Roberta and Dwight Gardner. So, if you guys could please stand.
Let's make this official. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Tiara and Katie, for getting all of those words pronounced correctly.
Thank you.
Grateful for that. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes. Please stand again. Municipal order number 2023-170.
Municipal order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Motorola Solutions of Schaumburg, Illinois, under Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of mobile radios in an amount not to exceed $80,754.36.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill.
The Fire Department is in need of purchasing some additional portable radios for 15 personnel, which will be located at the Trans Park, and then there was an additional position we added in the FY24 budget under training. So, we need to make sure to have enough radios on hand for all of that staff. We are able to purchase these radios with their accessories by utilizing State Pricing Contract, which is saving us some funds. We'll be paying less than $5,050 each for these units and their accessories. Deputy Chief Rob Gillum is here this evening to answer any questions you might have regarding the cooperative purchase. As Chief Gillum comes to the podium, I would like to take this opportunity to share...
On up, Chief.
That he is, this is going to be his last board meeting in front of the Board of Commissioners. He is getting ready to retire August 31st after 20 years of service to the city. He has served the last five years in the role of Deputy Chief, and our community has served, he has served our community well under this leadership, so we very much appreciate that. On behalf of Chief Brooks, who is unable to be here tonight, the Fire Department and the city, I would like to publicly express our appreciation for Chief Gillum for this one last time at this meeting, and to recognize his personal and professional sacrifices and achievements and dedication to our community. So, thank you, Chief Rob Gillum.
Very much.
Don't go away, Chief.
A little unexpected. Thank you. But if you happen to have any questions about the radios, I'm here to answer them.
We do, we do. For eight and a half years I've been up here, and Linda's been around about that amount of time, and these guys for several, I don't know how many exactly, but several, we've watched your leadership and the impact that you've made on your department, and we really, really appreciate it from the bottom of our hearts. And does anybody want to make a comment?
Ditto for me as well, but as a former dragon and always listening to you talk and stuff and know that, you know, you have that love of skateboarding and everything else and stuff, I know under your leadership, since I've been here, being able to work with like our, you know, our first, you know, our firefighters and police officers, and always having a great working relationship has always been a benefit for myself, because if there's things that I don't know, sometimes I'll come and I'll ask for things. So, we're losing an asset and stuff, but I understand sometimes you have to look and you're moving on and stuff. So, I wish you well in whatever adventure that you have next.
Commissioner.
Anybody else?
Thank you so much for your service, and enjoy retirement.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And would you like to introduce who's going to come behind you?
Yes, so Battalion Chief Doug Morris will be taking my place as Deputy Chief, starting September 1st after I retire.
That's going to be a vote?
Yeah. Assuming you approve them. But he should do a fantastic job. He's been a great asset to the department as well, and he'll, his leadership will be, hopefully, even better than mine. That's the plan.
That's a lot, so we look forward to working with you as well. I do have one question on the radios. What's the shelf life of one of these radios? How long do they last?
So, typically, the radios that we currently have now have actually been in service since about 2013, so they're running at 10 years old, and they're running strong. The previous version that we have have just become obsolete. We actually have a grant, it's a regional grant that we've applied for over the last three years, and we're still waiting for that approval. We keep reapplying for it, but those have become obsolete, but they're hitting the 20-year range. So, life expectancy is, it is what it is. You know, it's a, it's a job where things take a beating, and, you know, as long as we take good care of them and treat them like they should be treated, then I expect another 10, 10 solid years out of the current radios that we have now.
Great news. I just, I felt like you ought to have one question as you're leaving.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Anybody else, anybody else want to ask him with another question? Okay. Thank you very much for everything. Ashley, can we call the roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-171.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting software subscription services from Tyler Technologies, Inc. in the amount of $134,762.3 for fiscal year 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey.
This is an annual sole source purchase for maintenance with one of our most important software packages we have in the city. It's our ERP program, and so it covers our financials, human resources, community development, and also offers a citizen-facing e-suite module, so it is vital for this particular software to continue to operate smoothly. I'd like to ask IT Director Donita Weeks, if you have any questions, she'll come forward to answer those questions.
Want to tell us what this technology does?
It helps us pay our bills and collect our revenues.
Okay. That's it, that's great. Then we like it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's actually over 35 different modules that we use around the city. There's actually about 160 different city employees utilize this software. So, it's actually covers a lot of stuff on our finance side, asset management, our actual general ledger accounts, project accounting, all the way from our HR and actual payroll to community development, so inspections, code compliance, things like that. It covers kind of a broad spectrum. It's kind of our city-facing, as much as we can get into the software, so.
Like the backbone. Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-173.
172.
I'm sorry, 172.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the number 2024-02 for equipment and outfitting for Police Vehicles from On Duty Depot International, LLC of Science Hill, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $217,673.50.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown.
The Board approved the purchase of 19 police vehicles at the July 18th meeting. If you recall, I was not here, I apologize, but sort of not. I was on vacation. But anyway, so we went out to bid, open bids on July 26th for the outfitting of these 19 vehicles. Four bids were received. On Duty Depot International submitted the lowest responsive bid, so again, $217,673.50, and they are recommended for award. Chief Michael Delaney and Captain Beldon Perry are both on hand, so if you have any questions about the type of equipment and/or the process for the outfitting, we were able, obviously, to get vehicles this year that were already available. We don't have to wait for them to be built, so that was very helpful. And so we can start outfitting these vehicles as soon as we can get this particular award approved and purchase orders submitted and all of that. But if you do have any questions, like I said, Captain Perry is here, as well as the chief.
Never apologize for vacation. Those are good, those are much needed, but, and I hope this is a sign of better times to come as far as our supply chain and purchasing and those kinds of things, that it stays that way. We'll knock wood on that. Any questions or comments here, guys? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-173.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting the number 2024-04 for parking lot overlay from Scotty's Contracting and Stone, LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $200,787.70.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey. Katie?
The city received one bid, unfortunately, one, but we did receive one, for parking lot overlay, and it is recommended to approve this bid for Scotty's Contracting and Stone. Work will be done at two specific locations, the Bowling Green Community Center, the entire parking lot, front, side, back, and then also at our Fleet facilities, we needed to get an overlay done of their parking lot. So, both of those projects did come in with the total being $200,787.70. They came in under budget, so very, very glad to hear that as well. That doesn't normally happen. But if you do have any questions, our Public Works Director, Andy Souza, is here to answer those questions.
Hopefully, another good sign of better things coming our way.
Hopefully so.
Anybody have any comments or questions on this? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-174.
Municipal order approving the submission of fiscal year 2023, Section 8 Management Assessment Program Certification for the Housing Choice Voucher Program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Bailey.
This is an annual requirement to submit the CMAP, is what it's called, certification, to evaluate the management and operation of our Housing Choice Voucher Program. The Housing Division expects to receive a full score and, once again, be awarded the designation of a high performer agency. I would like to thank Housing Manager Elvira Remick, who is here. She's also here to answer any questions, but certainly she does a great deal of work with this program, making sure that we meet all of the federal guidelines, and it is a very important program that we offer.
And I'm sure, I wouldn't know, but that designation probably helps us to get more vouchers than other communities can... She's nodding yes, that's a yes, I would assume. Go ahead, okay.
No, I'll wait for the next one.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perrigen?
Yes. Municipal order number 2023-175.
Municipal order approving and accepting 13 housing vouchers for the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown.
The city's Housing Choice Voucher Program has been awarded 13 additional vouchers. This brings our total number of vouchers to 750. Eight of the new vouchers will be added to our regular voucher program, and the five remaining will be referred to as stability vouchers. So, the designation of those is to encourage a community-wide commitment to ending homelessness. As you know, that is very difficult to completely end. But again, if you have any questions, Ms. Remick and our community, Neighborhood and Community Services Development Director, Brent Childers, are here.
Anybody have comments, questions? Brent, could you?
Yes, I'm excited that we continue to get more vouchers. I know that a lot has to do with, they know that you all will use those wisely and to fulfill the goals of the program, and I would love for you to share with the community a little bit more about these new vouchers that we have, these stability vouchers. So, just if you could explain a little bit about how these might be different and what, in terms of a tool that they're using, are there things as, you know, a city commission, is there a role that we have, anything that we could do to get more of these stability vouchers for our community?
Okay, I'll try, I'll try to bring all that together. So, one, thankful for being here tonight, appreciate the opportunity to come talk again about how we continue to provide affordable housing options for our community. Whenever I started at the city 13 years ago, we had 606 vouchers, and that was the number we stayed at for a number of years, and now tonight, with this acceptance, and once we roll these in, we're going to be at 705. So, an increase of 144 vouchers, that's 144 families that receive rental assistance every month that didn't just a few years ago. So, we're proud to be, continue on that growth. The stability vouchers are a new form of voucher that came out. We do not have any of these vouchers currently, so this is a new form that came out, and HUD approached and said, hey, would you be interested in these? We said yes, and they give us five. And you say, how do we get more? We started several years ago with just five VAS vouchers, which are homeless veteran vouchers, we're up to thirty-five of those. We started out several years ago with mainstream vouchers, which are non-elderly disabled vouchers, and we started out with like ten to fifteen of those, I can't remember what the initial number was, and we're up to eighty. So the point is to get started, and then you can grow that. Commissioner Perigin, Mayor Pro Tim Perigin's question while the go, do they look at this as part of the evaluation? Absolutely. Our ability and Elvera's really ability to make sure that we maximize the use of every voucher that comes into the community and maximize the use of every dollar that comes into the community looks favorably at HUD whenever they're looking to reallocate vouchers and assets back across the country, because it's an unfortunate thing. But there are some communities that can't take advantage of all the resources that the federal government provides them and can't take the best use because they have families in their communities that are struggling to find housing just like we have here. So we continue to look for ways, how do we grow this, how do we expand this, how do we move forward, how do we continue to make Bowling Green a better place to live for all families that live here? So I think the main things that we would ask for is just your continued support of the program, continued support of the work that we do, and really I just ask that Elvera continues to stay and run the program and do all the work, and I just stand up here and talk. So that's the partnership that we have. But it is really, really, really neat whenever you think about, that's another hundred and forty-four families every month that are getting a level of help that helps them provide more assistance to the family, more food on the table, more things that otherwise they wouldn't do had this organization, this city, this team not said, we're going to do this and we're going to make this better for our community. So I appreciate the support that you all have given us over the years and will continue to give us moving forward. Any other questions?
Brent, I actually have a question, I have three.
Three questions?
Yeah.
Let's go one at a time, I have a short memory, so.
That's cool. Let me ask you this, the first thing is that the vouchers, could they ever, have we used some of those vouchers here in Bowling Green? Because a lot of people always think that the Section Eight vouchers is mainly for leasing or renting a property. But have some, any of those vouchers here in Bowling Green been used to buy a property?
Okay, so that's what you're talking about is homeownership. We have a homeownership program in partnership with Live the Dream, we have thirteen homeownership. Those are regular vouchers that instead of us paying towards someone's rent, we're paying towards someone's mortgage. So they were in our program, they went through the homeownership counseling, they went through all the classes, and they purchased the house. That's a partnership we do with Live the Dream, I think our number is thirteen, and it usually stays about that number. So yes, that is an element of our program. So out of this total seven hundred and fifty that it would be, thirteen of those would be what we consider homeownership vouchers. So yes, that is an option that we do in Bowling Green, those are all in Bowling Green.
The second question?
Okay.
It actually relates to the first question that I asked, how can we grow that? Is there like a cap that we only get like seven hundred and fifty?
No, it's really more on the programming and education side. So they have to be educated through a homeownership class, they have to be qualified through that, they have to be graduating through that, they have to have a property ready. It's really that side, it's not our side. We're not as capped as the program itself and the number of applicants coming into that program are. They still have to be qualified, they still have to meet all of their eligibility requirements. Everything else applies, the difference is instead of us paying a landlord, we're paying the bank.
The last question, because you mentioned like the homeless problem that we have, and we know in the United States it's growing. So my last question is that, and it may be more so of a grant type question and maybe for Nick and something to look at in the future, but I, just speaking for myself, like transitional housing, I don't know if that could ever be something here, and I hope one day it is, that can vouchers also be used for those transitional housing, and can we try to get that implemented somehow? Could we get more, you know, vouchers if we had that?
I remind the commission that several years ago we partnered with Hotel Inc. for the purchase and rehab of two properties that serve as transitional housing units in Census Block Group 1033 and 1034, those are eligible as vouchers. So under our homeless preference and a person going through that program, we're working with Hotel Inc. could stay there in a transitional state and still maintain their housing status as homeless, just like if they were in a shelter, and then could transition out and take that voucher with them. So that is a program that we continue to work and have worked for several years.
Thanks, Brent.
Any other questions?
Thank you for everything you're doing in that area, and it's a huge help to a lot of people. I have one question to follow up. So I'm in this Housing Choice Voucher Program, and somehow or another I've managed to earn a better living, I've got some education, and do I cycle out of that? Are some of these vouchers turning over?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we lose probably ten to twelve a month.
Thank you.
So it's a constant cycle, and I will tell you, we have, HUD allows for a transitionary period under our program, and so if your income raises above what is eligible, you still stay on the program, but you're, we're not paying anything for a period of six months. And then after that six months, you kind of have this ability to prove, hey, where things good, you know, there's stability, then they come off the program, we turn around and take that voucher and give it to somebody else and try to get that lease back up in the community. So there's a constant churn of people.
I say that for the public's consumption more than anything.
Absolutely.
Because there, we mentioned some training, robust training programs and some things that are really free for those that desire those, and with all these new really good-paying jobs coming out to our trans park, this is a great opportunity, a great opportunity to take advantage of those programs by the time those factories and open up the battery factory, OI Glass, Tyson, you could be staring down a really good job.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Municipal order number 2023-176.
Do a roll call first, please, ma'am.
I'm so sorry.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes. You knew I'd be like this.
It's okay.
Municipal order number 2023-176.
Municipal order authorizing and approving the amended exterior property improvement program agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Live the Dream Development, Inc. for Census Track 102.1 Exterior Property Improvement Program in the amount of one hundred and two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey.
So our exterior property improvement program in partnership with Live the Dream has proven to be very successful, but due to that, we have a high demand for its use. So we've been asked to provide an additional hundred and two thousand dollars to infuse the program this year. There was such a high demand. This hopefully will help to fund improvements for up to an additional twelve properties in Census Block 102.1. This is, started out at four hundred thousand, is that correct, Brent? So this would bring it up to five hundred and two thousand. There are caps on the limits depending on whether you're a commercial, residential, or rental property. But if you do have any questions, Mr. Childers can answer those.
I think we kind of owe it to the audience for Brent to maybe explain where that census track is and how they might be able to apply for those funds and what they can use them for, just a real quick.
So as part of our Neighborhood Improvements Program, this is probably our most popular program that we've done, we've done this in every neighborhood area that we've been in, and so this is contracted through Live the Dream, and so currently we're in 102.1, which I know everybody knows exactly where that is. So, but that's roughly Eighth Street to the river from bypass over to the railroad tracks. So think about roughly where the chamber's at, all the way down to the riverfront, and then from the railroad tracks all the way over to the bypass. So a lot of your lower downtown, and then around the medical center, up towards Fairview area, so there's a lot of residential properties in there. And so what this allows is up to seventy-five hundred dollar reimbursement for exterior property improvements. If you're a business, it is fifty-fifty, so they have to put up fifteen thousand to get seventy-five hundred. If you're a landlord, you have to put up eighty-twenty, I don't remember the math on that one. And then if you're a homeowner, you don't have to put up anything, it is one hundred percent, so that gets the full seventy-five hundred dollars, no match required. But there's a twenty percent match for landlords and a fifty percent match for businesses. Any other questions or concerns?
Have you had a report about the mix in terms of this demand being so huge? Is it businesses, homeowners, renters, or a mix of all of it?
I don't know offhand.
Okay.
Katie or Nick, I'm sure would have more of that kind of detail, but I'd be glad to send you that. But I know that this has been a popular program, and it filled up almost immediately. We raised the limit from five thousand to seventy-five hundred, just trying to get that extra level of investment. We're also, you all have given us an extra level of investment as part of the Neighborhood Improvements Program in a couple of budget cycles, so we had some extra cash, we felt like this was the right opportunity to invest it into this, and so that's, but I can't give you a specific breakdown at this time.
Well, I know the folks who live down there are so proud of their neighborhood, the Shakrak area, over there by the medical center, and the businesses too, and so I'm really excited that with this program that they're able to, you know, continue to invest there, in their lives there in our lower downtown. It's just so exciting to know that these programs mean something to our community and that they're taking advantage of it, so thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you. I might have to get Donita up here, my computer says reboot required in nine minutes. You want it? I'll give it to you. No, I'm okay, I'll just use it. Thank you, sorry about that, I've never seen that, Donita. Municipal order number, oh, I'm sorry.
Do the roll call. No, it's fine. Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Yes. Okay. Municipal order number 2023-177.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for the Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding to the Kentucky Department for Local Government in an amount up to one million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey.
I believe this is the first opportunity we've had to apply for these funds, but the city is seeking grant funds through the Kentucky Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, which is through the Kentucky Department for Local Government. The project we're looking at here is to replace a culvert under Whispering Hills Boulevard. This particular location was hit heavy by the tornadoes in 2021, and this funding is because of that. And so we want to address some issues. The goal for these funds is to lower flood stage portions of Whispering Hills neighborhood and possibly remove fifteen existing properties from the floodplain. There are, as I understand, two houses that would like to rebuild but currently cannot, so this may help with getting those going. There is no local match required. Grants manager Nick Cook is here, he can answer any questions. We also have environmental manager Matt Powell, I believe, somewhere? Okay, sorry, couldn't see you behind the podium. So if you have any questions, they are the two experts on this particular grant submission.
I have one quick question. Is this going to help with the new Jennings Creek Park, we're going to talk about that here in a little bit, but will that help to alleviate flooding in that new park area?
Yes, ma'am. This will stretch from Whispering Hills Boulevard all the way up to the Traugat property at the headwaters where the spring comes out to feed the stream.
And how much more water can it, I mean?
It's going to be a matter of quite a bit of calculation over the course of the project as it moves forward, the folks who are working on that, some of them are here in the room, but it's a pretty complicated math problem, but it's going to be significant.
That's great, because that floods a lot, and that's going to be a pretty active park, I'll bet, so.
Think so, yes.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
Just real quick, I'm really grateful to have this context for why that area in particular is the one that seems to have the least amount of progress in terms of rebuilding, and so this map that you gave us of us be able to kind of understand, it makes a lot more sense other than just, you know, still waiting on insurance to come through, and so I'm just really grateful for you all, you know, really looking at all the ways and the barriers for our community to rebuild and to get their lives back, and just really excited about helping this particular part of this neighborhood find solutions to being able to rebuild. So just thank you so much.
We're stuck too.
And Matt likewise, you know, one thing that I've heard, some of the people, and I think that Katie was mentioning it when you guys were reading it, or maybe Sue was mentioning it at the time, there's a lot of people that hasn't been able to rebuild, that would love to rebuild, and we knew like December twenty, the tornadoes in 2021 towards the end, you know, a lot of people lived there for many, many years, and it'd be good to see the homes that be back there. But I'm curious, where will that water go, you know, from the flooding?
Do you guys have a copy of this in front of you?
We do.
All right, so if you take a look over, and by the way, Nick Lahon started putting these together for a lot of the things that we're doing, so as often as I stand up here and bask in the accomplishments of my subordinates, this time I'll give him some credit, I love these things. If you'll take a look at that white grid diagram, what you see there is if you were to draw a center line down the stream and take away half of the world, and you could stand and look at it and, you know, from the side, that stair step that's right in the middle, that represents Whispering Hills Boulevard. So that culvert that's photoed above it is just too small, and so that thing went in well before the standards of practice that we follow now. Whoever built that, and I don't have any idea who put that in, it's just way too small. And so what you get is, on the lower side, those lines represent where that floodplain exists, on the upper side, you can see that it takes a giant leap up. When we make the culvert big enough to handle all of the water that comes to that point, it's going to change the lines on this map and allow that water to flow through freely in shortest possible terms. Whispering Hills Boulevard right now is a dam.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all.
Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Municipal order number 2023-178.
Municipal order authorizing the acceptance of an award in contract for state and local cybersecurity grant funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for cybersecurity personnel for the Information Technology Department in an amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown.
We applied in late 2022 for this particular grant, we had hoped we would have heard back in January, but it took a lot longer than we thought. So we just, in the last week, right, Nick, got the grant agreement, so we would very much like to move forward with accepting these grant funds. We do have a particular position that this grant would fund over a three-year period, would cover the salary and benefits associated with that position, and there is no local match, so again, benefit for us, we will get three years to pay for this position. We do have Mr. Cook and obviously Ms. Weeks here to answer any questions if you have, and actually I think I would like, Donita, if you would, I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot, to step forward and kind of describe the benefits that we're going to gain by having this position.
One, we would have people to fix your surfaces while the meetings are going on, that's one.
Never seen that before.
So obviously, cybersecurity is a huge risk, it's something that our department deals with on a daily basis. The network traffic, the emails, we are constantly being hit, I'm not really sure why, government is the number one attack, but it is. And so this, we can throw a lot of money at equipment, at defenses, but what we really need is someone to actually sit down and have the time to actually analyze, to be fully focused on cybersecurity, to really take all of the tools that we have and analyze that data that's coming in and change our processes and change how we're doing things. And so we have a number of systems in place to protect us, right? We have between different hardware equipment, routers, firewalls, things that we're doing, all kinds of blocks on your email, as you know, on our websites, filtering, DNS, there's a ton of things that we are trying to do, but our biggest hindrance in cybersecurity is having the resources, because the IT department has to support the daily needs of every department, and security always tends to start to take a backseat. When there's something that's broke and, you know, there's somebody that can't get their job done, we go fix that. Well, meanwhile, someone is still back here trying to attack us constantly. So that's really what this money is going to be spent towards, this position that is fully focused on, on securing our network. And as you guys have heard, horror stories from many other municipalities of what happens when it takes your systems down, and so we don't want to be one of those, and this grant is going to give us that opportunity to put some more time and allocation to our protection.
Questions or comments? Everybody good? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Ordnance number BG-2023-23, first reading, non-binding.
Ordnance closing a public right-of-way. Ordnance approving the closing of an unimproved right-of-way located on a portion of First Street, abutting north of Legacy Drive and adjacent to 203 Garvin Lane.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown.
So this is an action to close an unimproved portion of right-of-way, and this was taken before the Planning Commission, they unanimously, unanimously, sorry, approved this particular closing, and so if you do have any questions, our, the executive director for the Planning Commission, Ben Peterson, is here and can answer those.
Questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigin?
Ordnance number BG-2023-24, first reading, non-binding.
Ordnance rezoning real estate. Ordnance rezoning attractive land containing twelve point four two acres, from HE Agriculture to L-Lite Industrial, located at Zero Whitney Drive, presently owned by Platinum Development[1713.42] industrial located at Zero Whitney Drive, presently owned by Platinum Development LLC.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Bailey or Beasley Brown. Thank you.
Again, this action comes before the board by unanimous vote of the City County Planning Commission. So if you do have any questions, I would ask that Ben Peterson come forward for answering those questions.
Any questions?
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Peirgin.
Yes.
Municipal order number 2023-179.
Municipal order approving recommendation from the Bowling Green Area Convention and Visitors Bureau to distribute $97,860 of transient room taxes to the Southern Kentucky Performing Arts Center Public Arts Committee.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown.
This action is required by Chapter 18 of our Code of Ordinances. So the board is being asked to consider distribution of our transient room taxes under a special projects program that the CBB does operate. And so I have asked if Ms. Murphy, Sherry Murphy, would come forward. She's our Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Director to kind of explain this a little bit further. My apologies, I am stumbling through tonight, so I apologize.
We're all going to get there.
Yes. As you all know, this is part of an ordinance that was established a long time ago when we decided to set aside some of the transient room tax funding for community projects essentially and that would attract tourists into our community. And as you know, I think some of you were even there the day that they made the announcement for the arts, the public arts projects that will be happening in the community. This would be a part of that larger measure that we'll start to see over the next few years. You should have diagrams in your packets of exactly what they're going to look like with the height and the length. It's quite long, 19 feet. But our board did approve this last month and we did go before the fiscal court last Thursday, so this is the last leg of that final approval. So I would ask you to, please let me know if you have any questions or just comments in general, and we'll move forward on the project.
Like a great project. And I think I'm going to say thank you to Mike Buchanan for leading that charge for our outdoor arts program, which is going to be phenomenal, starting, I was at the press conference, I think, Linda was there, starting at Skypack with a bronze and...
Visitors and residents alike typically enjoy living in communities that have lots of public art on display, so we want to be amongst them.
Right, right.
Pro Tim, just last night, BGMU board passed to do art around BGMU.
That's fantastic. That's fantastic. I think the mayor had a question about cameras and how we're going to be protecting said outdoor art. I just even hate to broach that, but it's going to have to happen. I mean, we know this.
Right. So the mayor specifically asked about the location where the city was going to contribute toward one of these signs, so over there between the Hot Rod Stadium and the wrap. We do not currently have city-owned or operated cameras in that location. I feel quite confident that the Hot Rods and probably the wrap do have some cameras. So if there is an incident, obviously, our police department could have access to those for an investigation. I imagine there will be more cameras going up in our community as time goes on, but it would be up to the property owner of where that art sits for them to be responsible to put up cameras to help with that monitoring.
And I would imagine that the art, the outdoor art committee will be broaching that with these property owners, I would hope.
I'm sure that there will be some type of discussions on safety and security of keeping them maintained as well.
Right. Sounds like a great project. Really cool. And it will bring tourism in.
Think our visitors will really enjoy seeing it. And the whole idea was for them to want to take selfies with it and project that out to all their friends, family, and relatives to let them know where they're at and what they're doing to even further Bowling Green's name out to our visitors.
Bailey, questions, comments? Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Peirgin.
Thank you. Yes.
Municipal order number 2023-180.
Municipal order accepting donation from Living Hope Baptist Church for creation of a mental health and resiliency program for the Bowling Green Police Department and approving an engagement agreement with Help the Helpers LLC.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill. Katie?
I would like to thank Living Hope Baptist Church for considering the city for this donation. It's $40,200 that would be coming to the city to be used by the police department to establish the mental health and resiliency program. This would be used for the department employees and their immediate family members. We would be partnering with Help the Helpers and clinician Cindy Lemon with this particular program. And so I would like Chief Delaney, if you would mind, to come forward and to explain a little bit more, if you would, about how these funds will be used.
Pro Tim, commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. I won't be long, but several months ago, Living Hope approached me and asked if there was something during the tornado that we had or we didn't have that we needed that would help the officers. We'd been in contact with Cindy Lemon about starting a program like this. So she had submitted a proposal to me. I then turned it over to Living Hope, and then after several discussions, they agreed to fund the program. But Ms. Lemon is here tonight with her husband and five children, and she's going to come up and explain a little bit about the program, if you don't mind.
Thank you guys so much for having me tonight. It's almost like a dream come true. My husband is a retired detective from Bowling Green. And, you know, Delaney and I have known each other for a very long time. But specifically, what we feel like that this is needed is there's a resiliency that is sometimes missed within our police officers. A lot of times, we have officers that are struggling, whether it comes to personal issues, family issues, financial issues. And so this is a program that can really address all those needs and how cumulative trauma can affect that and what they can do to kind of implement strategies, techniques, things that they already have in their back pocket, but they may not even realize that it's there for help and for them to be able to be the strongest members of society that we have and also the most resilient. I think that it's pretty sad that we have to go through things such as the tornado as a community that went through and recently with our officer, Matt Davis. But the reality of it is, is that stuff's not going to stop. And so they have a wonderful amount of training, specifically when it comes to mental health and resiliency, police officers as a whole really struggle with understanding how that can affect them. And also, they struggle with knowing the resources that are out there. So I'm hoping that what I can be able to do is to bring those resources to the table and give some education and work closely with the peer support that they've already developed, which are wonderful humans. And they really are doing the hard work and making sure that each other are taken care of. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer that, but that's just a little brief scenario.
That's wonderful, wonderful. And I know the chief really appreciates it. And Living Hope just continues to keep giving to this community when we most need it.
Really a blessing.
Yes.
All right.
All did for the tornadoes and just keep doing, keep, you know, it's wonderful. Thank you. Anybody?
Yeah, I'm just so grateful both for the chief and you really thinking about our police officers as human beings and whole people and their families and how do we really support them in ways that really, you know, help them become more resilient and improve their quality of life. And just so grateful that we have you as a resource, knowing, you know, as a wife of a police, a former detective, what that looks like and what does it mean to, as a human being, being asked to do these superhuman things, these dangerous things on a daily basis and what that can do to you as a human being. And I was interested, you know, in your proposal that you had, one of the terms you said was, had in here about, you know, recognizing, you know, becoming jaded and how that's actually a sign of you being impacted by the secondary trauma. And just because I feel like this is, for people who don't do this frontline work, maybe this feels a little bit kind of higher level, what does this really look like about how secondary trauma can affect a police officer? So could you just sort of give that example or just explain that example about how, you know, if you start feeling that way, just as one example of how this affects police officers in a way you wouldn't think so?
Sure. Typically, people, you know, what they'll think about is there's one big thing that happened. For instance, the tornadoes, which was extraordinarily hard for all of our officers to go through and the fire department, for that matter. But what we see in officers that makes them unique is that they put themselves in a situation where they're either fighting for themselves or someone else's life on a daily basis. So every single call that they make, every time that radio keys up, they have this surge that comes over them, and it's a protective quality, not only for themselves but for other people. Well, after a period of time, they've trained their brains and their bodies to respond in a certain way. It's hard to turn that off. And so for them to then be human and come home to a family or for them to, you know, be able to interact with someone and not feel like, what's the really, what's the situation really going on here? Do I need to take control of this? It's an extremely difficult period for them to balance. And so what happens is often in the past, and what I saw when my husband was working, was that, you know, the mindset is, is that's just how it is. That's just how it is. You know, you suck it up and you keep going. And what we're realizing now is that that's not how it is, that you can have interventions that help. So when you come, when it comes to being jaded or when it comes to being seen as someone who's supposed to have it all together and can't show any weakness, they're really in a position where they're not going to ask for help or they're not going to go to those people that possibly they could. So what this program allows and what we're hoping that our police officers, at least in the confines of their own department, they can be human, they can talk about the things that really matter, they can continue to be resilient in their community, we can retain these officers that we spent so much money and time and effort in training. Because what happens is they see so much and they don't see a way out. And so they're like, you know what, this isn't for me anymore. Maybe I wasn't supposed to do this. Maybe I was wrong my whole life. Maybe this isn't something that I'm able to do anymore. And that's all wrong. It's just, it's a matter of giving them the tools and the resources to be able to say, you know what, let's take a step back and see how we can implement certain things in your life that are going to continue to allow you to be the person that you are and continue in this field, in this city, and be able to have the benefit of retiring and hanging it up, if that's what you choose to do, and being proud of what you're doing and not feeling like that you just took a loss for everybody else and then it's over at that point, so.
Well, I think that shows just why you're just the perfect person to do this because you just understand this so well. And I'm just so grateful that our community and our city is going to be giving this resource to our officers and their families so that they get the opportunity to be humans too.
Thank you so much. It's truly a dream come true. I'm really excited about this, so.
And you don't want to work with her.
I get it, I get it.
I have to say, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm sure those young men in the back are awfully proud of their mother right now.
I guarantee you. Can, will you all stand up and let's congratulate you for your mom? Yeah. That's a good-looking bunch there, Cindy and Mike, a good-looking bunch. And Mike, all this talk of cybersecurity, I know you're getting excited back there, too. We got something for everybody in your family. Thank you all so much. Municipal order number 2023-181.
I'll call the roll first.
I am so sorry.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Peirgin.
Yes. I just get excited about this stuff. Municipal order number 2023-181.
Municipal order approving a donation in agreement with United Way of Southern Kentucky for the design and construction of Jennings Creek Natural Playground and Bourne Learning Trail.
So moved.
Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill.
I'm privileged to be in this seat tonight because I get to present to you these donations that we're receiving. So United Way of Southern Kentucky has presented the desire to donate funds to the city for tornado recovery reinvestment in the amount of $343,500. This is a pretty significant donation. And these funds would be used for the design and construction of a natural playground and Bourne Learning Trail along Jennings Creek. I would like to ask United Way of Southern Kentucky President and CEO Debbie Hills, do please come forward and to give a little bit more information. We also have some other staff members, Cameron Levis and Matt Powell, that could also answer questions. They are both very much involved in the development of this project. Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. As I think everyone knows, we've been heavily involved in tornado recovery work since the morning of December 21st, when we established our tornado crisis fund, which is typical work of United Way. You know, whether it's a hurricane in the south or fires in the west, United Ways normally lead large fundraising efforts on the behalf of disasters in communities that they serve. We were very fortunate through our tornado fund to generate over $3.5 million in revenue to support the needs here. To date, we've allocated over 1.1 million serving victims with everything that they need. You think if you lose everything, then you need everything, right? It's not just about getting into housing, you need everything that goes into that housing. We've served 329 households, helping them get back on their feet. With our stated goal from the beginning was always to return people to a place that was as good as or preferably better than they had before the tornado. We're down to about 35 victims that we're still serving as we work to continue to meet their needs. As we saw that we were going to have some significant dollars to do some impact projects on the backside, we've invested in two areas. One is housing. We have invested to provide 16 additional purchase opportunities for individuals that were impacted by the tornado that will be through Habitat of Bowling Green and Housing Authority of Bowling Green. And then we wanted to do something very, very special in the Creekwood Jennings Creek area, knowing what a place of heartache that represented for the residents and the children there. And from the beginning, I was talking to Brent about, I use the word memorial, but it was really more about a park or something that children there, that would be very special for them, that could last a lifetime and create many new happy and positive memories. And through our work with Brent, he connected us with the parks folks, and they started sharing a vision that they had for work that they were doing with a greenway trail behind Jennings Creek. I will tell you that we went out there one time and walked the trail and saw the creek and understood the vision for what was happening. And we knew that that's where we wanted to invest to create this incredible, happy, positive memory for the families and childrens there. So we're thrilled to provide this opportunity and to be able to invest to build that natural playground and Bourne Learning Trail for that area.
It's going to be a huge impact in that neighborhood. And Debbie, just to clarify, these funds came, I think we spoke the other day, they came from all across the country. They came from 49 states?
We actually had contributions from, what we could trace were 49 states. I joked the other day at the news conference and said, I'm not sure what's happening in Vermont, but maybe there's something in the water there. We could not trace any donation that came from the state of Vermont. There were nine foreign countries. And when we look at our national network, it's about $400,000 that I could account to through connections through United Way worldwide. I'll give you one example. We had a very small United Way in Texas contacted me and said that they had a company that wanted to make a contribution and could, you know, the CEO of that company call me. We had a wonderful conversation, and by the end of that conversation, he committed $100,000 to the fund from a tiny, small town in Texas. We also had a similar situation from a family foundation in Florida that works a lot on homelessness, and obviously, they knew the impact that the tornado would have on homelessness. The United Way of Kentucky established a statewide fund, knowing the extent of the damage across the state from that event and looking in particular at the west side of the state that did not have a strong established United Way and really needed the assistance from that fund. We netted about $1.2 million. And then looking locally at connections we have here through our corporate partners that have been longtime supporters through individual donors, that was about another $1.1 million. And that was tracing all the donations $500 and up. We had almost 1,800 contributions to the fund from across the country and world. So it just confirms that we still live in a very generous and caring community and state and country and world. And many people chose to invest to help change the situation that had occurred here.
We're awfully grateful to each and every one of them and all of our faith community and every nonprofit organization and every, everybody across the country and other, I'm born in Vermont, I don't understand those folks. They're usually pretty good. But we do, we're very, very grateful to everybody for this contribution and for you all to take the leadership to get it out there into the needs of our community.
Just, again, I mentioned at the news conference the other day, we're investing 100% of the funds raised, both from that and other programs that we worked on related to tornado recovery.
Thank you for your efforts. Anybody else?
Would you explain to the community who haven't visited one of your Bourne Learning Trails and one of our parks, what that will be like for our families with young kids?
The other reason the park itself and then adding the Bourne Learning Trail was such a perfect idea, I think many of you know, our high concentration on early childhood education and kindergarten readiness and play, and outdoor play is a natural element of a child's early development. One of the things that we have, I think we now have 17 throughout our 10 county area. It's called a Bourne Learning Trail. It's 10 interactive signs that gives parents or caregivers very simplistic things that they can do when on a walk or outside to help hone those early education skills. And it's going to tie in with that natural involvement or environment that the playground will have. And one example that I keep giving is there's a sign that says, can you hear the birds chirp? Listen to the birds chirp. You know, maybe that sign now will include birds that are native to that area so that there's a learning opportunity tied to the nature element of what the park is going to be. So that's just an added element tied to the play value that will come from the incredible playground that our friends at MKSK are going to help design and implement.
I'm so excited about this opportunity, especially for this neighborhood and the kids and, you know, Jennings Creek being hit so hard and those children experiencing the trauma from that event. from that event. And knowing what we are learning about how important it is to, when you're dealing with anxiety and you've been through something traumatic, a lot of those kids, they maybe will go straight from a car or a bus to the concrete in their parking lot to their apartment and not really have the opportunity to really feel the dirt underneath them and that firm, strong foundation underneath them. And like you said, take a minute to hear the birds chirp and feel the wind and hear it through the trees. And how we are learning about how just those little things that sometimes we take for granted in rural places like Kentucky, that how much that can help calm your system down and when it doesn't feel safe, those things can make you feel safer, especially for kiddos who maybe can't explain why they're feeling the way they are, the calming effect and the mental health impact for the kids who've been through this traumatic event, that how we're focusing on this being a natural playground and them being able to get into nature after having been through this is such a beautiful and such an important way to think about caring for those who have survived the tornado. And I don't know if Cameron, are you coming up to tell us a little bit about the natural playground part? Yes, I'd love for you to share with the community about some of the play apparatuses and how this will look for kids.
Yeah, so ultimately, our goal with a space like this is to do something like we don't have. Obviously, our playgrounds are phenomenal. I love all of our parks, but we don't want to just pull a playground structure out of a catalog. We want this to be a unique play experience that families, children, adults, whoever cannot get at our other parks currently. And so preserving those natural spaces and creating that play opportunity at Jennings Creek is the goal. As you walk that greenway with the outdoor classroom and a lot of the things that have been developed so far there, the goal is for it to blend in. As you're walking, you want it to kind of make you do a double take, if you will, that you don't realize those things exist without looking a second time and saying, oh wow, there's a really cool park here with a lot of opportunities to experience different things. So, we take inspiration, there's a lot of different parks, even just within our state, that on our vision, vision book, if you will, that we shared with United Way, have a lot of great examples of what that could look like. So, it's reusable materials, natural resources to create those play structures. So, it might be a system of logs or a system of boulders that create a play opportunity. Another example, very specific example in the space is there's a ditch that kind of runs along to the creek in the open space that we're going to be implementing this. And we've even talked with MKSK about doing some wildflowers in that ditch, but doing little foot bridges, maybe out of logs that go over it. Just different things, making you feel like you've really stepped out of a hustling and bustling city, a growing city, and you've gone somewhere that you didn't think existed here. And that's what we want to create, kind of a haven for people, again, to connect with nature, be able to explore, make every experience in the space different than the last one. And so that's the ultimate goal. And yeah, it's exciting. It's fun to see it come alive, so.
That's so exciting. And so then that's just my final question is timeline on when we can expect this to be developed and ready to play on?
Yeah, so I was just telling Debbie while we were sitting over there, and Matt may be able to answer this a little bit. MKSK, I think, is going to be providing us with some visuals, hopefully soon, from what they've told us. So, you want to?
Sure, absolutely. I'm just dragging extension cords for this one. I just plug in the power to the thing that needs it. So, in this particular circumstance, we've been kind of held hostage by, things need to happen in order, so by the sequence. So, I was just telling Ellie that I'll talk to MKSK tomorrow about contracts. Purchase orders will come quickly, presuming we get your all's approval to accept the gift and we'll move quickly from there. We've had a lot of discussion. There's been a lot of folks with tremendous vision who've been looking at this already. So, I have a feeling that this one will move quickly.
Well, so much.
I want to also point out, if I could, that this kind of got started because I was at the celebration by the morning in the noon Rotary Clubs.
Exactly right. So...
So, we want to say thank you to them.
That's a bit of a misnomer. So, Clarissa and Cameron have kind of had this vision for a while. Cameron's been really bending my ear about this kind of a project for a long time, trying to help find ways to integrate some of the things that I do, some of the things that Parks does, some of the things that Nick Cook does. From that, moving forward, knowing that we had a vision for this space, the things that Clarissa's already accomplished with the greenways. Rotary approached us and said, we understand that there's been some habitat loss, things like that, that we may get to address. So, they granted us some funding to go in and make some small corrections. That was $20,000 to the city and $20,000 to Western Kentucky University Center for Human Geo-Environmental Studies. So, we collaborated with those folks. Of course, Scotty stepped in and donated everything that they did, so that $20,000 came right back to us.
And the re tree.
And so, and the re tree with TBA. So, it's been a ton of folks that have been continuously putting investment into this thing. There's still a ton more to come. You guys have heard us come and apply for some grant funding. And we have MKSK working with us in the background to master plan all of this, to make sure that everything that we do will be cohesive with everything else.
It's fun to watch this vision that Cameron and Clarissa Lemon have put together, snowball into a real thing because they're communicating that out there. And I know you've got a PowerPoint. I know it's not the final thing, but if that's something that could be put in draft form and maybe put out there to get the community excited about it, so those folks, not just those folks living in that area, but across the community.
That's absolutely our intention. Community involvement is goal number one. We're going to be really pushing it. We've kind of had a little veil of secrecy up until just here very lately. So, now I think everything is in the daylight and in the sunshine about what we see as the near-term improvements. And of course, the long-term improvements are just unbounded. I've made a ton of ZZ Top references. This thing's got legs.
Thank you to everybody, the United Way, the parks, the Public Works Department, Nick Cook and the grants and Rotary Clubs and whoever else is going to come along and participate. Scotty's, so thank you.
This has been a true, bustles and blooms. This has been a true group effort.
Just one last thing, too, on record. This weekend, just so the community knows, we're having a Down at the Creek event. We've done an open house for this greenway the first two years after it opened. This is the third annual one, but we've kind of rebranded it as a Down at the Creek event. Different community vendors, Boy Scouts, the library, Matt, and County Stormwater are going to be doing different activities. And so, we really just encourage the community to come out and enjoy the space. With United Way, we're going to have some opportunities for kids, adults, whoever, the whole community to kind of draw out what their perfect park in that area would look like, which is a really fun concept and a fun activity, as we just kind of get that community involvement for what they want the space to be. So, that event is Saturday, the 19th, from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. So, yep.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-182.
Municipal Order authorizing acceptance of Federal Emergency Management Agency reimbursement funds related to severe weather event on March 3rd, 2023, and further authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Military Affairs Division of Emergency Management.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill.
So, as you remember, back in March, we had a pretty severe windstorm that came through Bowling Green. We did have some damage, obviously, to a lot of downed trees, power lines, a variety of different things. So, this is a normal agreement, memorandum of agreement that we would do if we hope to apply for any reimbursement of funding for expenses that the city incurred due to that storm. So, again, Matt Powell has been helping us quite a bit with getting all of this together. But what we are doing is basically just seeking the potential for reimbursement through FEMA for our expenses incurred for this particular storm. If we are successful, we could get back up to about $110,000. I doubt it'll be the full amount. There's a percentage share with that. But certainly, Matt has put the yeoman's effort into gathering all of the information. Mostly, it was wage-related work that our Public Works and Parks staff did. So, again, Matt has prepared all that paperwork. And so, we are prepared to submit our application to receive funding back and hopefully will be successful in that endeavor.
But the experience. Do you have any questions, comments, roll call?
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-183.
Municipal Order accepting transfer of rich property located at 836 Yuma Circle and 2607 Yuma Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown. Katie?
This particular action is due to a very long-term maintenance issue. So, the city would like to take ownership of these two properties. And again, I would like for Matt Powell to come forward and provide some additional details about this particular item.
Right. There's been a decades-long history of circling the bowl. In a typical set of circumstances, when a drainage basin is created in a subdivision, that basin is the very real property of the adjacent homeowners. And by ordinance, we outline how maintenance works. So, that homeowner is responsible for mowing and litter pickup, minor erosion issues. And the city steps in when there's a major structural failure to that community resource, which is the drainage basin. In this circumstance, this plat was filed in 1967. And rather than follow that prescribed method, these were deeded to an imaginary person, to the best of my knowledge. Hillary could probably fill us in a little bit. And I know Brent's also had some history with these. So, what that put us into a circumstance was when the community reached out to us to say, hey, these things are overgrown, they need attention, we would then throw those through our code enforcement's department because that's a property maintenance issue. Codes would go through the motions of trying to find the owner, cite the owner, file those paperwork. It wouldn't happen. Public Works would step in. We would correct the issue, but it wouldn't necessarily come into our maintenance list because it still wasn't our property. And so, this has been a cyclical thing that's been occurring every few years for a very, very, very long time. Recently, someone private purchased those properties, thinking that perhaps they would be an investment and determined that they were worthless, which we could have told him if he'd have asked. However, it makes the most sense for us to stop engaging multiple city departments in fruitless effort and just simply accept these things into city maintenance for the time being. We'll evaluate some possible ideas for things we may could do with them in the future. But this stops us from having to do this continuous cycle and just says, okay, the Public Works Department is going to take care of these for now.
I'm really excited that we're finally able to do something with these properties. I know the neighbors in that area, just has been a constant frustration of not knowing what the solution is because of all those barriers that you've mentioned. So, I'm so grateful that you all are pushing through all those things that seem, sticking us in a circle that we can't get out of. I'm just grateful for you all pursuing this and really improving quality of life for these neighbors on both sides. They're just, this is so exciting.
It seems like we did something similar to this over by Potter Gray years ago with the basin. So, thank you. Thank you all. Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-184.
Municipal Order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Luna LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill.
The Job Development Incentive Program Committee met in June, discussed two particular projects, so both of those are on the agenda tonight, that have applied for the state incentives under the Kentucky Business Investment Program. So, the first is with Luna LLC. Luna is actually locating their headquarters here to Bowling Green. And they will be creating 33 new jobs. And in return, the city would provide 1% match to the state's 3% withholding credit. That could amount to approximately $173,000, almost $174,000 over the life of the incentive, which is a 10-year time period. So, this entity could benefit from those funds back, reinvest those into their business. And then they also would get the credit from the state.
That's our JDI P committee. I think Commissioner Beasley Brown and Commissioner Hill both serve on that, so thank you for that. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-185. This is along the same lines here.
Municipal Order approving a job development incentive program employee withholdings credit agreement with Southern Coil Solutions LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill.
So, this is the second project that was discussed at that June JDI P committee meeting. And this is with Southern Coil Solutions. They are actually locating, they're a new company locating in the Trans Park. They are looking to invest, capital investment of nearly $17.9 million for this particular project. They're creating 30 new jobs. And so, again, the city's 1% withholding credit could generate about just under $160,000 over the 10-year incentive period, but it would be matched with the state's 3% credit.
Also want to say thanks to Christian for being here that is with our Economic Development Program that gets out here and hustles these deals and brings these folks here. So, thank you, Christian. Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2023-25, first reading non-binding.
Ordinance relating to property tax rates. Ordinance setting 2023 property tax rates, franchise tax rates, and improvement assessment rates and setting forth guidelines for penalty, I'm sorry, payment, penalty, and interest.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Beasley Brown. Katie?
Just reiterating, we had the public hearing at the beginning of the meeting. We are not proposing any changes in the tax rate. It will remain as it currently stands. So, 20.5 cents for real estate and 26 cents for personal property. So, again, no change in rates. These rates have been in place since 2018. And so, we would just continue that for the 2023 tax year.
Which they were lowered in 2018.
That is correct. Yeah, the real estate rate was lowered. Obviously, the personal property tax has been in place longer, but they have been those two rates for the past five years.
And the PowerPoint from the public hearing will go on the website.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2023-20, second reading, binding.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of an unimproved right-of-way located along Double Springs Road and a portion of an unimproved alley along Double Springs Road, Booty Court, and Gordon Avenue.
So moved.
Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill.
I believe this had a unanimous approval at the last, at first reading. Okay. You're fine. You're fine.
Anybody have any more comments or questions? Roll call.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes. What was that real important? Ordinance Number BG 2023-21, second reading binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 12.739 acres from HB Highway Business to RM4 multifamily residential located at Hennessy Way, Vintage Lane, and Corvette Drive, presently owned by the Southern Retail Partners LLC.
So moved.
Okay, any questions or comments, or Katie?
Your motion was by Beasley Brown.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Beasley Brown, second by Hill. Sorry about that.
So, again, this was, I believe, a unanimous vote at first reading?
Yes, it was. It was. So, anybody have any more further questions or comments?